You got yours, Courtney? Uh-huh. How? Did you use your old?
Dude, that is...
So I'm gonna try this old one, eh?
That is insane.
Oh, no.
I'm not going to... Alright.
Thank goodness you're sitting right here.
Yeah, we are, you know, I'm not gonna worry about it.
...meeting, may I have a roll call?
Mrs. Denison?
Yes.
Mrs. Seema? Mrs. Calhoun?
Here.
Mrs. Dukes?
Here.
Mr. Wazuski?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America's stand as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Let us observe a moment of silence. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mrs. Denison?
Yes.
Ms. Dukes?
Yes.
Mr. Wazuski?
Yes.
Motion carried. Recognition of public. Any person or group wishing to address the Board on agenda items is requested to register their intent with the Superintendent's Secretary prior to the beginning of the Board meeting. Persons are asked to give their name, address, and telephone number, their group affiliation, if and when appropriate, and the topic to be addressed. Such requests shall be subject to the approval of the Superintendent and the Board President. Per Board Policy 0169.1, no participant may speak more than once on the same topic unless all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. All statements shall be directed to the Presiding Officer. No person may address or question Board members individually. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes' duration. Please note that since this is designated in the Board policy as a time for the public to provide comment, the Board of Education and the Superintendent will not respond to any comment during the meeting. We will, however, provide a written response to each member of the public who is recognized either by email or the U.S. Postal Service. Next is our Face of a Raven Awards recognition.
Okay, thank you. If I could have all the award winners meet over here on this side of the stage. Find your principal. If you're a student, we're gonna have the adults first, and then the students. You can line up in building order. Board members, if you could head up to the stage at this time? Okay, so our Face of a Raven Awards every month, this is our first one of the year, recognizes outstanding adults and students for their great behavior and/or something great that they've done here at or for the school system. It's a prestigious honor that I like to recognize every month. What we're gonna do is I'm gonna call each individual, they're gonna come across the stage, get an award from one of the... or from the Board members, shake hands. After we get through all, we're gonna take a brief recess and we'll go out into the cafeteria so that everyone can get pictures out there before we leave. Everyone is more than welcome to stay for the Board meeting, but don't feel obligated. If you wanna leave after the recess, you're more than welcome to do that as well, okay? Alright. Our first staff member is Brittany Pendleton. She's a custodian at Brown Middle School. Brittany was nominated by a fellow staff member, it said Ms. Pendleton was nominated... oh, by several staff members at Brown. They praise her for working very hard every day. Brittany is an amazing employee, she works hard and shows up. We can always depend on her, she comes in with a great attitude and is always willing to help. She's gone on to a day shift this year, so it's a little bit of a different role, but we're really thrilled with her work ethic, and congratulations, Brittany. Alright, our next staff member is Ms. Angela Epley. She's an intervention specialist at Ravenna High School. Staff member wrote that Angela is "the face of a raven," driven, thoughtful, and deeply committed to meaningful learning. She works tirelessly to provide her grade 23 students with authentic work experiences that go beyond the textbook and connect to the real world. She goes above and beyond to ensure each child's needs are being met in creative ways through creativity, dedication, and unwavering care. Ms. Epley sets a powerful example of what it means to lead with purpose and heart. Congratulations. Our next staff member is Ms. Amy Silverston from Ravenna High School, also an intervention specialist. Amy is the heart of her classroom and a true example of what it means to lead with care and confidence. As the face of a raven, she brings strong problem-solving skills and a calm, steady presence to every situation. She approaches each day with a positive attitude that lifts up both her students and her colleagues. No matter the challenge, Amy is always ready to step in, offer support, and find a solution. She goes above and beyond to make sure her students feel safe, supported, and inspired to learn. Her dedication, kindness, and work ethic make her a valued and respected member of our school community. Congratulations. Our third intervention specialist from Ravenna High School is Ms. Addison Minaski. Addison is truly the face of a raven, smart, thoughtful, and always one step ahead. She brings strong problem-solving skills to everything she does, whether it's finding creative ways to support her students or helping her team work through challenges. Her positivity shines through every day, creating a warm and encouraging environment for both students and staff. Addison consistently goes above and beyond for her class, putting in the extra effort to make sure every student feels seen, supported, and valued. She leads by example and shows what it means to be dedicated, caring, and driven. She is more than just a teacher, she's a role model and a true leader in our school community. Congratulations, Addison Minaski. And I just wanna point out, these three have a really difficult situation this year. The high school, they've taken it head-on together as a team, and they've really worked hard to problem-solve and get through that with the difficult situations that they're dealing with in their classrooms, so thank you. Our last staff member is Ms. Andrea Morgan. She's school counselor at Brown Middle School. Before I read this, Mrs. Morgan's been at our elementaries for the last few years. How many years at the elementaries, Andrea? How many years down there?
Eleven years.
Eleven years, so we've changed a little bit in our format, and I brought her and Mrs. Curtis Lor together, and Ms. Morgan jumped right ahead and said, "We got a plan, we got this solved, I'm ready to go to Brown and help out." So the staff member wrote, "From the moment she began at Brown, Ms. Andrea Morgan has been a force of positive change with an energy and enthusiasm that is truly contagious. She has not wasted a single day. Instead of a slow transition, she jumped right in to getting to know our staff and students. Her office is always abuzz thanks to her ability to quickly and effectively build relationships with Brown students to where they feel comfortable sharing anything from academic struggles to navigating friendships, middle school life, and so much more. She has proven herself not just a listener, but a proactive problem solver, too. She has seamlessly integrated herself into the fabric of her school. Students trust her, the teachers respect her, and the parents feel confident in her abilities." Congratulations, Ms. Morgan. Alright, ready, Ms. Coleman? Alright, our first student from preschool is Lennox Hager. Lennox has grown so much since he started preschool last year. He follows school rules and is the biggest cheerleader for all his classmates. He loves to tell everyone what a good job they are doing. Congratulations, Lennox. Alright. Good job, Lennox. Our Face of a Raven from Williard this month is Leila Burrell, second grader. Leila is an amazing role model for her peers. She is a wonderful leader who is always offering a helping hand. She works hard in all she does and has already made so much growth in her academics. She is respectful, responsible, and in control, and her teacher said how lucky she is to have her in class, so congratulations, Leila. Our West Maine student is Kayden Hadden... Aiden, sorry. Fourth grade. Kayden is always looking out for his classmates to make sure they are being respectful, responsible, and in control. Kayden has shown his fourth-grade teachers that he is eager to learn and excel this school year. We are excited to see him flourish academically and socially this year. Great job, Kayden. Alright. Our Brown Middle School Student of the Month is Thomas Hand, fifth grade. Thomas was nominated by multiple teachers. Mrs. Miller, in particular, said the following. Every time I see Thomas in the hall, he is on track and happy. He is a ray of sunshine. He embodies respectfulness by greeting people when they enter and doing as he has told. Thomas is very responsible, appropriately using his devices without complaint. Thomas is in control of his emotions and is respectful while doing so. Mrs. Remley also mentioned that Thomas comes to school happy and ready to learn and always ready to help others in the classroom. Congratulations, Thomas. Great job. Alright, our final student is from Ravenna High School, Alexis Brown, grade nine. Mr. Parker nominated Alexis. He said, "Alexis introduced a new student to me as she was showing the student around to her classes. She did an exceptional job with the introduction and conveyed certain information in a very discreet and compassionate way, making me aware of circumstances while maintaining privacy and preserving the respect of the student." Congratulations, Alexis Brown. I did wanna mention, we did have a community partner today, Mr. Rick Hofer, who was unable to make it tonight, but he's a physical therapist here that we contract out with, and he had multiple nominations from the preschool about how great he works with the students, going beyond routine physical therapy. And unfortunately, couldn't make it tonight, but I wanted to recognize Mr. Rick Hofer, our physical therapist. Okay, we're gonna take a brief recess out in the cafeteria for a few minutes for pictures. We'll organize together and then come back in after a few minutes. Thank you. Thank you. Tonight, I am going to defer to Mrs. Kendra Fashing. She is our curriculum director, and since report cards just got released, I've asked her to give a brief summary of our outcomes and projected work ahead. So I'm gonna turn it over to her and let her discuss our report card, please.
Good evening. So I'm here to talk about our ABCs for success: attendance, behavior, and curriculum. Sure, I will. They told me that way. Okay, so we did have a two-and-a-half star rating, which is exactly the same as the year before, but I would like to highlight some positives within this. West Maine was a three-and-a-half star school, and I want you to focus right on the middle, bottom of the screen, on progress. They are five-star... oh, I'm so sorry, five-star school for progress. The progress component is a measure of the amount of growth that students are making on their state tests, so five stars for that. If we go to the next slide, please. The high school was a three-star building, and again, if you look at their progress, four stars on progress. And I would like to focus on what's happening at the high school. Okay, my clicker works. So on Algebra I, proficient is a 700 and higher. We had an average skill score of 700.5 on the Algebra I test. American Government is on the right-hand side, a 710.1. American History was a 718.2, and if you look at that bar graph on the left, the orange is proficient, and then purple is accelerated, and blue is advanced. For Biology, we had a 715.1, and again, orange and purple and blue, if you take a look at the scores there. So we are doing great work at the high school. We do know that we need to work very hard, though, to increase our student achievement in all of the buildings. We held our first district leadership team meeting last Wednesday, and I was very impressed by the data talks that were taking place with all the buildings that were there. First, we're focusing on attendance. Our attendance liaison, Marla Bolts, through a grant from the ESC, is working directly with Williard and West Maine. We're also continuing our partnership with the Cleveland Browns through the Stay in the Game program to reduce chronic absenteeism and get more students in school every day. Please remember that chronic absenteeism is missing more than 10% of the school year for any absence reason. Students can't learn when they are not in school, so we are working diligently to get kids to school. Sorry, I'm supposed to stay on this slide? I even have a note for that? Next, in the middle, behavior. We are strengthening behavior support. All of our buildings are using PBIS strategies to create positive learning environments. In addition, on November 4th, Miki Wiggins from the Northeast Ohio ESC will lead professional development for staff on de-escalation strategies to help minimize disruptions and keep students focused on learning. When students are acting out in class, that takes away from the learning environment, which is why we are implementing PBIS strategies in our classrooms. And then next, we have the curriculum. Academically, we are building on strong foundations. In reading, we are in our fourth year with the CKLA Amplify and ELA Curriculum for grades K through 8, and teachers are using benchmark data to target daily interventions and enrichment. In math, we've launched our new K to 12 illustrative math curriculum. It's a big adjustment, but our teachers are working hard to learn the curriculum while also closing learning gaps. To support them, we have a Summit ESC math coach, who will be working with Williard teachers, upcoming professional development for grade-level bands, and even classroom support from illustrative math representatives, where they come in person and do learning walks to give advice on what they see is happening. It will take time for the improved results to show, but creating math problem solvers in our students is going to be beneficial in closing the gaps in our math achievement. We need to stay dedicated to the curriculum and the work it takes to properly implement this in the classroom. Our Professional Development Day is on November 4th for staff, and it's a collaborative effort between the staff and administration with targeted learning opportunities that focus on attendance, behavior, and curriculum. This has all been based on the data from our school report card, teacher surveys, and our PD committee meetings. We have a great selection for staff that we feel meet the needs of what our data is telling us. Finally, Mr. Ryblin, Gina Simsek, and I are out in the buildings on a daily basis to support staff and students. It's not enough to just tell the staff, we need to show and support them as much as we are able to. We are dedicated to this work, and with everyone working together, we are confident we will see growth in our test scores. So let's remember, attendance plus behavior plus a strong curriculum will equal higher achievement. With everyone working together, we will see growth. Thank you. And with that, are there any questions?
I think it's important to note that, you know, we're not gonna settle for where we're at, and that we, although we did not go down, you know, our goal is to continue to increase. Three is the standard for standards met throughout the district, or the whole district, and we're at two-and-a-half, just below that three-star rating. You know, we're gonna continue to put the work in. I think we have a real, as Mrs. Fashing pointed out, a real pointed direction in where we wanna go now that we know where we're at. We have a starting point to move forward from with lots of new people that are eager to do the right thing and continue the ABCs of where we're at here at Ravenna. Any questions from any of you from Mrs. Fashing?
Okay, next on our agenda is...
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the Treasures Update.
Alright, well, I'm going to be doing my presentation at the podium. Alrighty, so my name is Kristin Plageman. I am the Treasurer for Ravenna School District, and it is that time of the year for us to present our financial fall forecast and assumptions. So what is a financial forecast? The financial forecast is a mandated reporting document from Ohio Revised Code, and it's used for a couple purposes. First of all, it is our basis for our Certificate 412, where we are stating to the state that we have sufficient funds in order to pay our bills. Additionally, it's an engagement tool with the community and stakeholders on financial planning and decisions, and it's a communication to our state auditors and the Ohio Department of Education on any potential financial problems. There's been a few changes that have occurred beginning this fall of 2025 due to House Bill 96. So a couple of the changes are, we have to do two required submissions, but the dates have changed. Normally, we would do our fall submission in November, and our spring submission... Normally, we would do our fall submission in November and our spring submission in May. Beginning this year, we are required to do our fall submission by October 15th, and then our, well, I don't know if I'd say spring, it's maybe more of a winter, in February. And why was that changed? So that was changed because they wanted us to be able to present to the community earlier financial forecasts of our district in order for our community stakeholders to make decisions on maybe upcoming November or May ballot levy items. Secondly, the forecast used to be called a five-year forecast, where you took some historical years, your current year, and four future years. Now, it's being required that we do our past, our current, and three future years. So why did they reduce it from a five-year forecast to a four-year forecast? Well, the reason why they did that was because they feel that as you get further out in your projections, the data maybe isn't as true to where it is. And I'll actually showcase that this evening when we go through some of the five-year forecast. So for this purpose of this presentation, and most Treasurers are still presenting to the boards and the community a five-year forecast, as we would like to present as much data as possible to our stakeholders. But when we're going to be submitting it to the state, it'll be in the format of a four-year. Can you please click on that? Thank you. So what does the financial forecast contain? So this is, and like I said, it's very hard to see, so I'm going to be breaking the components off, but this will be available on our district website tomorrow, and along as, oh, sorry. Accompanying with that will be also the very detailed assumptions, projections that are associated with the forecast. For the purpose of this presentation, I'm going to be taking different components of the forecast and presenting them in more of a visual and in some communication. Can we exit out of that, please? Okay. So what are the components of a financial forecast? So we have our revenues and our other financing sources. We have our expenditures that are being paid out. We have our debt services, other financing uses, and then there are some really key components of a forecast. We have line 6.010, and that is taking, what are we achieving in? What are we bringing in, our revenues and other financing sources? And how is it relating to what we're expending out? We always, we want to make sure that we're trying not to have deficit spending where our expenditures are greater than our revenue and financing sources. Another key line is that line 15.101, which is our cash balance or fund balance. How are we looking as the year ends? What are we projected to have? And we always want to have a cash balance that is positive, because as we have known, if we have negative deficit spending and a negative cash balance, then we're going to be put into fiscal oversight by the state. All right, so let's look at our revenue. So what comprises our revenue? So if you look at the green parts of it, that is our local taxes, and our local taxes contribute about 45% of our revenue sources. Last year, our local taxes contributed 40%. So because of having the new levy funding, it's able to contribute more, because as you'll see, our funding from the state has decreased. So our local taxes equal our real estate taxes. This is about 38% of it, and the real estate tax is not only our residential tax, but it's also our agricultural and business tax. And out of that 38%, 68% of that comes from homeowners, where the remaining 32% comes from our businesses. The next item in taxes is called our pup tax. It's our public utility tax, and that is coming from our utility companies in the area, so that's about 5.7%. Our district, like most districts, does not do an income tax. The next area of revenue is that 51%, and that's our state sources. So this is also referred to as our governor's budget. So this is the money that comes to us guaranteed for like a two-year period. So right now, the governor, I'm sure many of you have heard, in the spring, I think it was June 30th, he signed off on the two-year budget. So we know what our budgets, what our funding is going to be for the next two years from the government. So the state sources are broken down into three areas. First of all is our state funding, and our state funding is also known as our unrestricted funding, and that is comprised of our casino tax. So this is very interesting, because everybody thinks that districts get a lot of money from casino tax. The amount that we received last year was $127,470. So that is what we receive for casino tax. We also receive our per-student funding. So there's many formulas that are used in the calculation. They use our student enrollment, and then they assess what they feel is our community economic demographics. So there's many components that calculate that. The next one is called our state share of local property taxes, and that is comprised of our rollback. So we get a 10% Homestead Act, and then we get the 2.5% rollback. Our other sources of income, of revenue, and other financing sources is our 4%. And the 4% is, it is our Medicaid reimbursement, it's tax abatements that we receive, and then it's our rentals. So we're currently renting our tap-in building to education alternatives. So that comprises our revenue and our other sources. So now, I'm taking from that five-year forecast, that big long sheet, I'm showing you this is how our revenue and other financing sources look from three years past, our current year of '26, and then our four future years. So that is how our revenue is looking. The next are our expenditures, and expenditures are broken down into three areas. The first is our personnel costs. We are a, um, school districts are a service industry. We're providing the service of education to our students. So of course, that's going to be the highest amount. So our salaries and wages are 82%. So salaries would be our earned, our regular wages, they'd be our supplementals, our stipends, and then our benefits are our medical dental benefits, our STRS, SCRS, life insurance. So that is our 82% of our salaries and wages. In the blue, you'll see 14%. 14% is our purchase services. So what constitutes our purchase service? These are any kind of contracts that we have. So with our attorneys, we have our insurance for the district, we have certain students that are in our special ed programs that have, based upon the IEP team decision, they're best served at different places that we have to pay tuition. The other component is 4%, and that 4% is all our other expenditures. So you have our supplies, and the definition of a supply is any item that's a consumable. So that can be anything that would be just used for one year. You have our capital, which is another word for equipment. And very fortunate, Ravenna School District has a PI fund, so we do utilize our PI funds in order to make any of those equipment or capital purchases. Then we have debt. So we do have to pay to the Portage County Auditor's Office a fee in order for them to collect our taxes. So we do have to pay those debts. And then we also, if we have any transfers or advances, and the district does do some transfers to our athletic fund, so that we can make sure that we're offering a free pay-to-play for our students. And again, I took the expenditures and the other financing uses, and it is located on this part of the five-year, four-year forecast. So now, as I said, line 6.010 is very important. How is our revenues comparing to our expenditures? So we want to be blue higher than yellow. So blue is your revenues, yellow is your expenditures. So you do see we get a little bit in 2029, it's about a little bit of deficit spending. It's a little around $30,000, and then it does increase in 2030. But again, it's going back to House Bill on not having a five-year forecast. This is kind of the trend for most districts, is they do have revenues decreasing and expenditures increasing until you get closer to those target dates. Cash balance. This is another very important line. This is the last line on a forecast. It's line 15.010, and this takes what is our available fund balance. And as you can see, the district is quite healthy at the end of 2030 with a $4.3 million cash balance, which is very, very nice to see, because we haven't seen that in the last couple years. Oh, this is an interesting statistics here. So it is recommended for all school districts to have 60 days of cash on hand. So I went and looked at last year's fall forecast. So this year, we're expected to have 44 days, and the reason why that's a little bit lower is because we will not start collecting on the new levy until January of 2026. Last year, we had three days. For 2027, we're at 68 days. Last year, we were at negative 12. 2028, we're at 77 days. Last year, we were at negative 41. And for 2029, we're at 73 days. Last year, we were at 84, and I don't have 2030's statistics. As I stated, the full financial forecast and the assumptions will be available on the district website by tomorrow. And if anybody has any further questions or would like to meet, they're more than welcome to contact me. I provided my email address. And that is it. Much better than last year's forecast, so.
Okay, next are the reports of the board. Maplewood Report.
Yes. We had our usual Maplewood meeting last Thursday. One of the neat things about being on the Maplewood Board is we get to go and visit some of the different programs. This last meeting, we went to the cosmetology program. It is a full-scale salon in there, which I was never actually really aware of. They do hair, makeup, nails, pedicures. They are open Monday through Friday. Appointments begin at 11:30. So go in there and see some of the students and the great work that they do. The program helps get these students ready to take their state boards for cosmetology, but also in the program, they can learn to be a salon owner or manager, makeup artist. So it's not just hair. They go above and beyond for that. They will be open for the Christmas in the Woods event, which is October 31st. I know it's on Halloween, but the salon will be open and taking appointments for that evening also. So if you would like to call up there to get an appointment during the week, the number is 330-235-0021. So I encourage everybody to go up there and check out the students and the amazing work that they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Ravenna Parks and Recreation Report, just one thing. We do have a new Parks and Recreation Director who started on September 8th, and his name is Mr. Chris Bundy. The board will be meeting with him early October, and hopefully I can share some more information about his vision for our park system and moving forward with a lot of the changes that are happening. Report to the Treasurer.
Yes, we have a consent agenda. Items 12A, 1 through 4. 12A1 is the approval of the August 25th business meeting. 12A2 is the acceptance of gifts and donations. 12A3 is our August financial reports, and 12A4 is the approval of then-and-now payments.
12A, items 1 through 4.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Ms. Dukes?
Yes.
Mr. Wazniewski?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, the next we have is 12A5. It is a standalone. It is the approval of the permanent appropriations for FY '26.
May I have a motion to approve item 12A, number 5?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Ms. Dukes?
Yes.
Mr. Wazniewski?
Yes.
Motion carried.
The next item is 12A6, which is a standalone. It is approval of the resolution for the Fiscal Officer Certificate 412.
May I have a motion to approve item 12A, number 6?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Ms. Dukes?
Yes.
Mr. Wazniewski?
Yes.
Motion carried.
The next is item 12A7, standalone, the approval of our September 2025 forecast and assumptions.
May I have a motion to approve item 12A, number 7?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Ms. Dukes?
Yes.
Mr. Wazniewski?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And then we have item 12A8, is the approval of Reed Memorial Library's rate resolution for budget year 2026.
May I have a motion to approve item 12A, number 8?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Ms. Dukes?
Yes.
Mr. Wazniewski?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next are the reports and recommendations of the Superintendent and other administrators.
Thank you. If you'll take a look at 13A1, it's a standalone. This is to approve athletic worker rates. There is a 0% increase for the year, but it's for the '25-'26 school year as we do each year.
May I have a motion to approve item 13A, number 1?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Ms. Dukes?
Yes.
Mr. Wazniewski?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Number 2 is to approve a memorandum of understanding with the Kent City Schools regarding Title I allocations, so they'll be providing tutoring services for Ravenna students that reside here but attend St. Patrick's School. And since St. Pat's resides within Kent City Schools, they'll be providing those tutoring services.
Motion to approve item 13A, number 2.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Ms. Dukes?
Yes.
Mr. Wazniewski?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. 13A3 is to approve a contract agreement with Larnwell and the Ravenna School District for the purpose of meeting the educational needs of several of our students and necessary services on IEPs effective for '25-'26.
May I have a motion to approve item 13A, number 3?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Ms. Dukes?
Yes.
Mr. Wazniewski?
Yes.
Motion carried.
13A4 is to approve an amendment to the Ravenna High School Parent-Student Handbook. We had to update our honors diploma requirements, as those have just changed through ODEW, and Mrs. Fashing is recommending the change so that our students are in good standing to receive their honors diploma.
May I have a motion to approve item 13A, number 4?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Ms. Dukes?
Yes.
Mr. Wazniewski?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. 13A5 is to approve payment in lieu of transportation agreements for the following families as listed, per the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce. Students that are residing in the school district and eligible for transportation services, and we do not provide those. They can receive this payment in lieu for '25-'26 school year at the state minimum.
May I have a motion to approve item 13A, number 5?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Ms. Dukes?
Yes.
Mr. Wazniewski?
Yes.
Motion carried.
13A6 is to approve a purchase service agreement. We received funds through the school improvement grants through ODEW this year to work on our attendance at Willard Elementary School. We are recommending Mrs. Marla Bolts as the homeschool liaison to focus on attendance here through a purchase service agreement with the ESC of Northeast Ohio.
May I have a motion to approve item 13A, number 6?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Ms. Dukes?
Yes.
Mr. Wazniewski?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Onto items 14, personnel considerations. A1 through 3 is a consent agenda. The first is to accept the retirement resignation of Lenora Gano, family consumer science teacher at Ravenna High School effective at the end of this school year, which would be June 30th, 2026. Number 2 is to approve employment of resident educator mentors stipends as directed by ODEW, as well as the importance of getting our new teachers mentors. And number 3- number 3, the employment of the following substitute teachers as listed.
May I have a motion to approve item 14A, numbers 1 through 3?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Ms. Dukes?
Yes.
Mr. Wazniewski?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. 14B, this will be a consent agenda for 1 through 5. Number 1 is to approve the amendment to employee substitute employment resolution for wrestling. Originally, we had approved Michael Prickle III as an assistant wrestling coach at Brown. He is switching to a volunteer. Number 2 is to accept the resignation of key club advisor, Mr. Stephen Farhat, effective September 1st of this year. Number 3 is to approve employment of coaches as listed for the high school and middle school. Number 4 is to approve extracurricular and co-curricular advisors as listed for several of the schools throughout the district. And number 5 is to approve the employment of an athletic worker as listed.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve item 14B, numbers 1 through 5?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Ms. Dukes?
Yes.
Mr. Wazniewski?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Onto 14B, 6 and 7. These are consent agenda. Were pulled because of the employees listed. Number 6 is to approve the employment of two middle school coaches as listed. And number 7, to approve the extracurricular, co-curricular activity advisor as listed.
May I have a motion to approve item 14B, 6 and 7?
So moved. Sorry, so moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Abstain.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Ms. Dukes?
Yes.
Mr. Wazniewski?
Yes.
Motion carried.
We agree.
I'm sorry?
Oh, Donna.
You thought we didn't have her there.
We're good. Okay, on to 14C, volunteers. The first resolution standalone is to approve employment of the following volunteers as listed for bowling and wrestling.
May I have a motion to approve item 14C, number 1?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Ms. Dukes?
Yes.
Mr. Wazniewski?
Yes.
Motion carried.
The final one on here is 14D. This will be 1 through 7 as a consent as listed. Number 1 is to accept the resignation of a bus monitor. Number 2 is to accept the resignation of a bus driver. Number 3 is to approve unpaid leave of absence for maternity leave. Number 4 is to approve custodian to be hired. Number 5 is to approve the employment of a bus monitor. Number 6 is to approve the employment of an educational aide. And number 7 is to approve a long list of substitute employees in the classified ranks.
May I have a motion to approve items 14D, 1 through 7?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Ms. Dukes?
Yes.
Mr. Wazniewski?
Yes.
Motion carried. Recognition of public. Any person or group wishing to address the board on non-agenda items is requested to register their intent with the superintendent/secretary prior to the beginning of the board meeting. Persons are asked to give their name, address, and telephone number, their group affiliations if and when appropriate, and the topic to be addressed. Such request shall be subject to the approval of the superintendent and the board president per Board Policy 00169.1. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic unless all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. All statements shall be directed to the presenting officer. No person may address or question board members individually. Each statement made by a participant should be limited to three minutes' duration. Please note that since this is designated in the board policy as a time for the public to provide comment, the Board of Education and the superintendent will not respond to any comment during the meeting. We will, however, provide a written response to each member of the public who is recognized either by email or the U.S. Postal Service. And I believe we have two people to speak. Danielle Payott, is that correct?
Is it okay that I'm up here? I, so I am Crystal Williams, and this is my sister Danielle Payott, kind of advocating for her to speak. Our, my niece, her daughter, is a cheerleader with Ravenna Youth Cheer and loves it very much. On Wednesday, when Danielle picked up McKenna, the co-director Miranda, and the high school cheerleader coach, which is, am I allowed to use names? The high school cheerleader coach stated to Danielle, she wasn't very clean at practice tonight, meaning she had like noodle arms, if you will. And so they said, if you do not improve tomorrow at practice, you will not participate in the competition, which was on Saturday. So she came to my house after school practice. She knew, she knows the routines, been at all but two practices since mid-July, missed one game, and has been practicing very hard. So there should be no issue. I dropped her off at practice on Thursday, and Miranda, sorry, the co-director stated, hey, I know, do you know the conversation that we had with mom? I said, yes. She's practiced. She knows the routine. She knows that she needs to be clean and show everybody she can do what you know, what you know she can do. And so we stated with, she went to practice, and then the coach, the co-director said, you know, it really was just a scare tactic. We did that because we know she can do this, and we just want her to practice that way, too. Okay. She invited me and my fiancee to come to practice to observe her, to make sure she was clean. She was. We went to pick her up, and this is where we are at now. I am here to ask that it be considered to be revoked because both Danielle and the child's uncle, Frank, have been trespassed from Ravenna City Schools. Because after practice was over, we were waiting to speak with the director, the co-director, and the coaches as far as the decision. And they decided that it was a no-go. She would not be competing. And it wasn't for lack of knowing her stuff. It was because she decided that she didn't look right. So she tried, the coach decided to move her here and move her here just because she didn't fit. And when asked, Danielle asked the high school coach, you said that you would put her in the competition if she improved. Did she improve? Yes, she did. However, after they practiced the routine multiple times, she was tired. Obviously, she had school. She had practice with me. She had practice. So the conversation got a little bit loud as people were trying to talk over one another. So it was made to our acknowledge.
I'm sorry, we're at three minutes.
Sorry. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so you both have to speak, or?
Yes, you're listed. You're Crystal?
No, that was Crystal. I'm Danielle.
Okay, that was Crystal. Okay, you're Danielle. Okay.
Okay. So I was waiting for the director to speak. The director approached. The coach told her to speak. I said, okay, so what exactly is holding, you know, her from going? What did she do wrong? Well, first routine, she did great, but the second time around, she got a little tired, and it wasn't as on point. And I said, okay, but did you see, per our conversation, did you see improvement? She was like, yes. I was like, okay. Well, then the coach mom kind of jumped in and started talking over me and was like, well, all these other things matter. And I said, no, 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 they don't because this is based off of a conversation the day before. So I went from the conversation the day before, and I went back to the coach because the director just, she told her to speak versus the director actually approaching us and speaking as the adult. So I went back to the coach, and I said, so you saw improvement, right? So now you're going back on your word. This kid worked her butt off today. And now you're going back on your word saying that she wasn't good enough because the second time around, she didn't fit in. And she was like, well, I tried to move her here. I tried to move her there. And she just didn't look right anywhere I put her. Okay, well, I don't know how that's even fair. So as I was speaking, people started speaking over me. I didn't cuss. I didn't threaten. Now, I did. When people started speaking, I got louder. I wanted to be heard, and I stepped forward, kind of like I just did. Not to be intimidating. It was like getting closer because people were yelling behind me. People were yelling beside me. So I stepped closer. When I was told that I did this, I immediately told the director. I apologized. I didn't mean to intimidate the coach in any way, shape, or form. And, you know, please let her know. I have no way of messaging her because there was no way to message anybody privately on the app. So I did get loud. That all happened. The next day, probably around 3 o'clock, I was served trespass papers stating that I couldn't attend anything that my daughter is in because I threatened a high school student, and I cussed at a high school student. Those things never happen. And part of my problem was, is, you know, they told the kid one thing, and then they went back on it. And then come to find out, they didn't even do the showcase anyhow. So what, was she the only showcase? Which is even more frustrating. I tried multiple times to have things with the director, meetings with the director. She never returned any of my calls, my texts, nothing. And I have them to show if we needed. And then Mr. Haggard had got on there, and he said he was the president, and I should address Tia. And I explained to him that I did so, and that she wasn't responding. And the only way I got a response is by saying, hey, everybody, this program, make sure you're asking questions, because they weren't direct. They just said something different. Initially, when we started, it was practice is not as mandatory. It's not a choice. And if you don't attend, you can be asked to step out of games and practices and whatever. So, and other activities. When comp came up, it came up for that.
Okay, thank you. Your three minutes is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Informational items. NEOEA Day is on Friday, October 10th. There will be no school. End of the first nine weeks will be Friday, October 24th. And our next Board of Education meeting is on Monday, October 27th at 5:30 at Ravenna High School. And the board does have need for an executive session. An executive session or private session of the board is controlled by the Sunshine Law. It may only be used for special purposes outlined in the law. No action can be taken by the board during executive session. In accordance with Ohio Revised Code 121.22, the Ravenna Board of Education will go into executive session for the sole purpose of the consideration of any of the following matters. To consider one or more or applicable of the checkmark items with respect to a public employee or official. And ours is number 2, employment. May I have a motion to enter into executive session?
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Ms. Dukes?
Yes.
Mr. Wazniewski?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Back on record, we have returned to the open meeting. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mrs. Dukes?
Yes.
Mr. Wyszynski?
Yes.
Motion carried, meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.